Good evening. I would like to call Monday, September 23rd, Common Council meeting to order. Clerk Toronto, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for the meeting and other expectations?
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting, during the public portion, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so will be listed in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you have any questions, please use the link provided in the team's chat to submit them. Additionally, if you are called on to speak, please provide your details in the following format. My name is full name and I live, and I live at address. I would like to speak for or against agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please ensure that you unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we welcome Father Ryan Petrocarlo from Santa Delver Catholic Church. Welcome. Thank you so much.
Oh, good and gracious God, you are the ruler of all things and you bestow upon us your authority to guide your people. We thank you for entrusting to our common council this ability to participate in your authority. Help all of us heavenly father in our deliberations tonight. May we follow the standards of social justice that must reign over all civil and social affairs. In this meeting tonight, inspire us, Lord, with your grace to serve our people, your strength to speak honestly, and your courage to always put the good of all people above all else. We ask your blessing upon us, Lord, as we continue to work to form a city of greater justice and peace. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Clerk Toronto, would you call the roll, please?
President McBride.
Present.
Vice President Niskowski.
Present.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers. Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Present.
Councilmember Dr. Davis has been excused. A councilmember's present.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the report from the subcommittee on minutes.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the September 9th, 2024 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion regarding the minutes of September 9th.
Second.
Has been moving second and all in favor?
Aye.
The opposition? The motion's carried. At this time, we have a special resolution. Clerk Toronto? While we have the presenters coming down, thank you so much.
Special resolution, special resolution congratulating Leadership SBM, South Bend, Michawaka.
Prior to going to our resolution, we would like to invite former councilman Randy Kelly and others who are with him.
Welcome.
Special resolution number 32024. A special resolution of the South Bend Common Council congratulating Leadership South Bend, Michawaka for its first 50 years of shaping and developing community leaders of today, tomorrow, and beyond. Whereas 50 years ago, visionary Chuck Romer, Steve McTeague, and Jeremy Hammond, Hammond's conceived an organization to address the need for building a pipeline of skilled and knowledgeable local leaders who could drive positive change and whereas that organization developed into Leadership SBM and whereas Leadership SBM was founded as a response to a growing recognition and that affected, that effective community leadership required more than just good intentions. It also requires individuals who, who are well versed in the challenges and opportunities unique to the South Bend, Michawaka. And whereas the founders envisioned a program that would not only educate participants about local issues, but also equip them with necessary skills to address those issues effectively. Can it?
Whereas from the beginning, Leadership South Bend, Michawaka has been open to all and, and now more actively than ever, works to ensure that its participants properly reflect the community it serves. And whereas the curriculum focused on providing a comprehensive understanding of the region's economic, social, and political landscape, and it still does. And whereas Leadership 3000, whereas SBM Leadership 3000 alumni has have helped shape the future leaders of, of 50 years ago, the current leaders of today and the future leaders of tomorrow. And whereas over the years, SBM Leadership has evolved to meet the challenges as those challenges have changed. And whereas today, Leadership South Bend, Michawaka has grown to offer several key programs to cater to different segments of the population. And whereas these programs include the Signature Class, which amirs participants in all aspects of the region's civic life. Emerge, a program which supports young professionals and provides them with the skills and the networks needed to advance their careers. The Logan Leadership Academy, which is a collaboration between Leadership South Bend, Michawaka and Logan, designed to provide all executive members and team leaders at Logan with the skills and knowledge necessary to become more effective leaders within their organization. And finally, Leadership South Bend, Michawaka's youth program, which serves area high school students beginning their leadership journey.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the South Bend Common Council as follows. Section one, on behalf of the citizens of the city of South Bend, Indiana, we proudly thank the founders of Leadership SBM and their vision and foresight. Section two, we look forward to continually development of local leadership through the efforts of Leadership SBM staff and the new executive director, former council member, Randy Kelly. Section three, we hope that the Leadership SBM next 50 years are as successful and productive as its first 50 years. Section four, this resolution shall be effectively, should be effective immediately upon passions, passions by the South Bend Common Council approved at this 23rd day of September, 2024. Prior to asking the council members for any comments, I would like to invite former councilmember Randy Kelly to the podium to offer comments.
Thank you all so much for this recognition. I have to say it's a pleasure to be back in this room and not to have to cast a vote. So thank you all so much for having us. On behalf of myself, our staff, and our board of directors, I'd like to thank you for this recognition. It's truly an honor for us and we will continue the work we've been doing for the last 50 years and move it forward. As, as mentioned in the resolution, our alumni are 3,000 plus strong and they truly are the leaders of this community. I know there are several in this room. So thank you all for your support and thank you for this wonderful recognition.
Council president, I turn the podium back to you.
Thank you. At this time, I would yield to my colleagues to see if there's any comments from the floor. Councilwoman Tomas Morgan.
I just want to say congratulations and thank you for your service to our community in the past 50 years and moving forward, we look forward to seeing what comes, continues to come from this organization. And as a mother whose son benefited from the youth leadership program, I thank you.
Thank you.
Just congratulations. Great job. Thank you for all that you're doing in the community.
I would just like to say, continue with the good work. A lot of great work comes out of the organization and I am honored to be sitting in your seat. Thank you so much for entrusting me with the baton. So thank you. But for all of the work that you all do and for the work to come, it shows throughout the community. So thank you and congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you for growing leaders in our community. That's what we need. Randy, I hope you remember me. We're on a gymnastics team together, but it's a pleasure to see you and thank you very much, but thank you for your organization, all you have done.
Councilman Warner?
Nope.
Okay. Counselor Gooden Rogers.
Thank you.
Counselor Lee.
Again, thank you all. It's an outstanding program and it yields great fruit in our community and that's what we're looking for. So thank you.
Thank you, council. Thank you so much. At this time, I would entertain a motion to resolve from the committee of the whole. So move. Oh, we got pictures. I'm sorry, counsel.
We got pictures.
Everybody come down?
You want all of us?
Yeah.
We use everybody?
Thank you. Now entertain a motion to rise to the committee of the whole.
Second.
Been moving second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried.
The committee of the whole is now in session. And this is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Toronto? All right. Would you please give Bill 41-24 a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located 734 Notre Dame Avenue, Councilman district number four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Bill 4124 was in committee this afternoon and it come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
All right. The petitioner is present and I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's in front of us.
Skip Moreau, Principal Development Planner with offices on the 14th floor of this building. This first property we're looking at is 734 Notre Dame Avenue. Owner is Shamrock Realty Group LLC. And the requested action is a rezoning from currently U1 Urban Neighborhood 1 to U3 Urban Neighborhood 3, with the vision of building a three-story condominium building that will contain four units. So first taking a look. This is the site as it exists now. It's a vacant lot there along Notre Dame Avenue. For some context, this area has seen a lot of change in recent years with the construction of Eddie Street Commons as well as various infill projects and housing in this neighborhood. The surrounding neighborhood now is largely residential that contains a mixture of densities ranging from apartment units to townhouses. And then as you move further south into more of the single-family residential homes. The Northeast Neighborhood Plan, those recently adopted, identifies this parcel as U3 Urban Neighborhood 3. And this petition is also consistent with the city plan, comprehensive plan from 2006, objective of ensuring an adequate supply of housing that's available to meet the needs, preferences, and financial capabilities of households now and into the future. And this comes to you from the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation, subject to the written commitment that the building height will not exceed three stories, except for any roof, deck, or amenity as, as permitted by the zoning ordinance.
We see that there's another petitioner there. Would you like to give your name and address?
Good evening. Angela Smith from Dan Charner and Associates, offices located at 1643 Commerce Drive. We're here on behalf of Shamrock Realty, asking for the rezoning for what they propose here as Skip described as a four-unit condominium. This section of Notre Dame Avenue has a wide variety. There are a couple of single-family homes left. But Shamrock Realty was involved in the townhome project just to the south of this, as well as a estate home built at the corner of Notre Dame and South Bend Avenue. This is their next project they're looking at, kind of improving the availability and increasing the density along this area that's consistent with the comprehensive plan that was recently adopted by the neighborhood. I'd be happy to answer any questions and appreciate your favorable recommendation.
House members, do you have any questions? We did a thorough job in committee. So now we'll go to the public portion. Clerk Toronto, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 41-24?
I do not see anyone from the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing of Bill 41-24 is now closed. I will now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to send to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill 41-24 will go to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Toronto. Bill 42-24 has been tabled to October the 14th. So now would you give Bill 43-24 a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance for the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located 5614 Main Street, Councilman district number five, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes. Bill 4324 met in session this afternoon and it was come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
All right. Petitioner, we see that you're there. Please give your name and address and give us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Skip Moreau, Principal Development Planner with offices on the 14th floor of this building. This property is 5614 South Main Street and the owner is Twisted Metal Atlanta LLC. The requested action is a rezoning from currently S1 Suburban Neighborhood 1 to S2 Suburban Neighborhood 2. This rezoning is done to legalize an existing triplex. This is, this is the site as it exists now. This was annexed into the city in 1998 as part of a larger roughly 230-acre annexation for US 31 South. As you can see here, it kind of carved up some of those properties, so they're sort of split between Main Street and US 31 now. This rezoning to S2, as I mentioned, would legalize a triplex. It sort of matches the, it's consistent with the city plan, South Bend Comprehensive Plan, objective of ensuring an inadequate supply of housing that's available to meet the needs, preferences, and financial capabilities of households now and into the future. The Future Land Use Plan identified this area for commercial, but staff felt that maintaining the historic residential use for a three-unit dwelling would not be out of character with the general vicinity and would again offer a sort of a range of house types. So again, providing some more of that affordable range housing with the triplex. This comes to you from the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation. I believe the petitioner is online as well.
Petitioner, could you state your name and address and please give us any comments that you would like to make?
Eric Calverson, 13860 Hope Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004. I appreciate you guys considering this and it's been a triplex for some time and so we're looking forward to getting this zoning squared away.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? If not, we'll now go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Toronto, is there anyone looking to speak in favor or opposition for Bill 43-24?
I do not see anyone from the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor or opposition of the bill.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill 43-24 is now closed. I will now entertain a motion.
Send Bill 4324 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill 43-24 be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I'd like to make a motion to accept substitute Bill 45-24.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. All in agreement? Say aye. Any opposition? All right. Clerk Toronto, please give Bill 40, substitute Bill 45-24 a second reading.
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the east-west alley between 100 block of East Sample Street and Ohio Street, including its turn south connecting to Ohio Street and also the first north-south alley east of South Michigan Street, running between East Sample Street and Ohio Street.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is, Chair. This was heard in the Public Works and Property Vacation this afternoon and was given a no recommendation to the committee of the whole. I think they wanted to ensure that the description was correct and there was a couple, couple of things that came up in committee. I don't know if someone from the administration is on the line to verify that. But I believe that it is correct.
All right. Is there a petitioner present?
So this is Eric Corvath, Public Works Director with office on 13th floor of this building of County City Building. I can attest to what Councilmember Niskowski said, that legal description does seem to be appropriately matching the description. And we also sent a map along so you can see the map of location involved.
All right. Petitioner, could you give your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill before you, before us?
Stephen Woolley, 902 South Michigan, South Bend, 46601. Like mentioned, it's to vacate the alley on the 100 block between Sample and Ohio Street. The city has also requested that I compass the whole alley so it goes over with Ivy Tech's property as well. Pretty much, my plans are to expand the fence. I want to dog run more. We do a lot of cookouts, picnic area in the backfield. That way we can have a little bit more space. That way, we can have a little bit more space, and it's pretty much it.
All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? If not, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Torrado, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor or opposition of Bill 45-24?
I do not see anyone from the public in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay.
Or in favor.
Okay. At the point, at this point, the public hearing on Bill 45-24 is now closed. Councilmembers, yes, if you want to make statements?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I thought this is worth repeating from, from committee, the committee meeting, hearing, in that this particular petition and then the one following were submitted prior to when the alley vacation process was, was changed. And so is being considered under the old ordinance.
Considered under the ordinance. Anyone else?
I think I just note that these are both, as most of the alley vacations we do are paper alleys. They're exist really only in the registers and land books, and when you go out there, they're not really alleys. They're, they're alleys in paper name only, so. Thank you.
All right. Well, I will now entertain a motion.
I move that we send Bill 4524 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Torrado, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill 45-24 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Torrado, I would like to first entertain a motion to accept substitute Bill 46-24.
So moved.
Can I give a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in opposition? Motion passes. Clerk Torrado, would you please give substitute Bills 46-24 a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the first east-westbound alley, south of Prairie Avenue, between Glen Street and north-south alley, east of Brookfield Street.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is Chair. 40, substitute Bill 4624 was heard in the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee today, and it was given a favorable recommendation to the Committee of the Whole.
All right. Is petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address, and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Name's Robert Gundek, 1986 Prairie Avenue. And we just wanted to extend our backyard a little bit farther for secure more reasons.
All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? I know that we talked about this in committee. Councilmembers, any? All right. If there is no other questions, I will now go to the public. Clerk Torrado, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor or opposition of Bill 46-24?
I do not see anyone from the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor or opposition of the bill.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill 46-24 is now closed. Councilmembers, do you want to make any statements, or I will now entertain a motion?
Move to send 4624 to the old common, old common council with a favorable recommendation.
There's been a, there's been a motion in the second. Clerk Torrado, please call the roll.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill 46-24 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Torrado, would you please give Bill 40-24 a second reading?
Public hearing on an
Sorry, did I say 40?
Yeah.
47-24.
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10978-23, which fixes maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of executive departments of the City of South Bend for calendar year 2024 to add a full-time employee to one existing position.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is Chair. This was heard at Personal and Finance today, and was given a favorable recommendation to the Committee of the Whole.
I see that the petitioner is present. I ask that you state your name and address, and share with us key points regarding the bills that's before us.
Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor. Bill 4724 adds a admin assistant one to the Streets Department. This position will be charged with office management. Office management, answering calls, clerical duties, keeping the office organized, and also as a backup, a backup staff person for payroll, for the department's payroll process in the event there are absences of that, that person who oversees the payroll. Also, this part, this position will be cross-trained to take on other, other duties within the department as determined by leadership over there.
All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? We talked about it in committee. All right. Clerk Torrado, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor or opposition for Bill 47-24?
I do not see anyone from the public in person or online that wishes to speak in favor or opposition of the bill.
All right. I will now entertain a motion regarding this bill.
I make a motion to send Bill 4724 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Torrado, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers. Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill 47-24 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Torrado, please, I'd like to make a motion to accept substitute Bill 48-24.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion passes. Clerk Torrado, please give substitute Bill 48-24 a second reading.
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2024.
All right. Petitioner, we see that you're present. I ask that you state your name and address, and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor. Didn't really have a lot of budget transfers, but we have a $40,000 budget transfer within the Fire Department. This is to cover costs of new uniforms and turnout gear for the new recruits starting at the Fire Department. This, this year, they've had two recruiting classes versus the one that they normally have. So this is to cover that additional expense. Sewage Works Fund 641, budget transfer 45,000 to cover a capital purchase of a forklift there. Happy to answer any other questions.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Again, we hashed it out in the committee meeting. Clerk Torrado, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor or opposition to Bill, substitute Bill 48-24?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of the bill.
All right. At this point, the public hearing portion is now closed. I will now entertain a motion regarding substitute Bill 48-24.
Move to send Bill 4824 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Torrado, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Right. Bill 48-24 will go before the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Torrado, I ask that you give Bill 49-24 a second reading.
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year 2024 of 90,000 from the General Fund Number 101, 70,000 from the Parks and Recreation Fund Number 201, 343,000 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund Number 202, 2,868,630 from the Department of Community Investments Grants Fund Number 212, 3,501,690 from the Local Income Tax Public Safety Fund Number 249, 615,000 from the IT Innovation 311 Call Center Fund Number 279, 200,000 from the Water Works Operations Fund Number 620, 2 million 2 million from the Water Works Capital Fund Number 622, 61,500 from the Sewage Works Operations Fund Number 641, 339,365 from the Century Center Operations Fund Number 670, and 20,000 from the self-funded Employee Benefits Fund Number 711.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is Chair. This was heard in Personal and Finance Committee this afternoon, and was given a favorable recommendation to the Committee of the Whole.
All right. Petitioner, we see that you're here. We ask that you state your name and address, and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor. From Fund, Fund 212, Community Investment Grants, there's a million dollar, $1,900 grant from the Housing and Urban Development that will go towards homeownership, new home construction, home rehabs, and other public services. Also, the, another appropriation of grant funds in the amount of 1,867,730 that'll go towards the city's urban canopy program. In Fund 249, 3,501,690 in appropriation of those revenues, public safety, local income tax revenues. These are additional revenues we receive throughout the year. So we are appropriating those revenues, and those revenues are solely to be used to pay police and fire salaries. Then, from 6, from 620, Water Works Operations appropriation of 200,000 to go towards Water Works Facilities Plan. This plan will, is a study for their five-year capital plan that will assist in how they set rates in the upcoming years. With that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Councilmembers, are there any questions? If not, I will now go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Torrado, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 49-24?
I do not see anyone from the public in person on, or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill 49-24 is now closed. I will now entertain a motion regarding the bill.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Torrado, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Right. Bill 49-24 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Torrado, we are only doing the public hearing portion of Bill 50-24. Would you, would you please give it a reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the Civil City of South Bend for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and appropriating monies for the purpose of deferring the expenses of the City of South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025, including all outstanding claims and obligations, and fixing a time when the same shall take effect.
Is there, is there a report?
Yes, there is Chair. Bill 5024 was heard in Personal and Finance today, and was given no recommendation to the Committee of the Whole, and that was pending the more additional information that was going to be forthcoming today.
All right. At this point, we will now go to the public hearing portion. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. President, I'm sorry.
Present.
I'm sorry. Okay. All right. See, the petitioner is present. We ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Common Council. James Mueller with offices on the 14th floor of this building. I know budget season is long, and there's been a lot of presentations, and many of you have seen most of this presentation at the overview in the Personnel and Finance Committee. So I will go over it briefly here, just to highlight some of the changes from, from the August hearing, and what's been more, been given in more detail since then, as well as kind of looking, looking forward. So just a reminder of where we are. Tonight is the seventh public meeting on our budget, and South Bend always is a leader in our region in terms of input and public meetings on our budget. And so, again, this year, there'll be 11 public meetings in total. And Sam, you can advance the slide if you like. And with the aim towards a vote potentially on October 14th. Of course, by state statute, we have to pass it by November 1st. We also engaged the build the budget process again this year, where we went out into the community to get feedback from residents in terms of what their priorities are. And again, different games. They were at Fusion Fest. They've been at other community events, and trying to find creative ways to get the public to think about, you know, everyone wants more of everything, and that'd be nice, but unfortunately, we only have a finite amount of resources to spend. So try to get people to think of trade-offs. If you do more of this, you might not be able to do as much of this. And so that's what those games are meant to, to kind of simulate in terms of what we do here in the administration and the Common Council, figuring out how to stretch the, the public's dollars as far as possible to deliver the biggest impacts for the public. This is the fourth year of doing this, and again, this year, we, we have a record number of feedback in different ways. We have the 311 voicemails, online surveys, and then, of course, those in-person participants. So this year, just over 1,500 residents have engaged in the build the budget process. And the annual report from Innovation Technology will be coming out this Wednesday, September 25th. If you look at the top priorities, it's, it won't be a surprise to, to those of you who have looked at previous reports. If you look at the top priorities, uh, it's, it won't be a surprise to, to those of you who have looked at previous reports. Uh, of course, uh, streets and roads, neighborhood infrastructure, uh, is among the top of the list, uh, making sure that we have safe, uh, nonviolent neighborhoods, housing availability, accessibility, affordability, and continued investments into our public spaces. And accordingly, our strategic priorities for the past few years, uh, have matched up with the resident priorities and, and also council priorities. I won't go through them again because you've seen them many times, but again, they line up very well with the, the feedback that we've gotten from residents. So in terms of how we enter this, uh, the twenty-twenty-five budget process, we've been, uh, through a, a bit of a roller coaster in terms of inflation, prices, uh, revenue, economy, a, and, and all the things, but, uh, pieces are starting to stabilize. So prices have stabilized, although they're not coming down a, as much as we wish they would. Uh, although, you know, there's, from an economic standpoint, you don't want them to go down too much because then you have different problems. But nevertheless, uh, they've risen really quickly, but now they've stabilized. So they're going to stay at the, these high levels, and we're looking at, you know, roughly two percent, uh, inflation rate, uh, next year is what projections show. Uh, we're also, uh, continued growth, uh, good, good macroeconomic picture that, uh, there's, you know, knock on wood, no, no recession around the corner, although, you know, of course, things can surprise us at times. But, uh, in, in anticipation of this, the, the Federal Reserve has already lowered, uh, interest rates from their historic increases over the past couple of years. They just increased it by, uh, you know, two, two-quarter points, so fifty basis points, uh, which should continue to keep the economy plugging along, and they're confident, uh, that inflation will remain under check while also making sure that, uh, the economy continues to grow and has the resources it needs to grow. Uh, the competitive wages, uh, not just in city government, but across all sectors, uh, continue to climb, and, and they're climbing faster than our revenue growth because, uh, the city's revenue growth, income taxes and, and property taxes and others, uh, have a lag time. So, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll be catching up in, in the next year or two, uh, with costs. In terms of city financial position, uh, you know, we continue to have growing revenue because of these macro, the strong macroeconomic, uh, picture, and we continue to enjoy healthy reserves built up, uh, particularly over the past four years. Uh, we do have a structural deficit, uh, again, uh, but, yeah, again, these, these budgeted deficits don't necessarily mean, uh, actual realized deficits because we don't always spend, uh, all the things that are, that are, uh, programmed, uh, in a year, and, and we don't always, uh, anticipate all of the revenue that comes in, and, and I'll get into that in a moment. On the policy outlook, uh, there, you know, there's unlikely to be a lot of new federal spending, unlike what we've seen in the last few years. Uh, there are talks about changing the state road formula that could benefit, uh, cities like South Bend. And, uh, you know, then there's some concern about state tax reform proposals that could really, uh, uh, create a lot of disruption in terms of how, how local governments are funded and, and how, uh, those things work. So those are, we'll stay tuned, uh, a, as, uh, we get through the election, we have, uh, new members in the state legislature, a new governor, a, and see how those conversations proceed in the upcoming session. So compared to where we were in August, uh, the two major changes, uh, that, that have occurred is, uh, there's been a reduction in projected revenue, so both in the property taxes and, and local income taxes. Now, th- this comes from the DLGF estimates, and, uh, I, I can tell you that we expect to receive more money, uh, than is, is budgeted from, from these DLGF estimates, a, and, and one of the reasons why is, for example, the local income taxes, uh, we, we are receiving, we will receive more income taxes this year than we have projected from the DLGF next year, because there are different mechanisms in which they deliver this income. So, uh, some years, uh, i- it's as high as nine million short. So, uh, oftentimes, it's maybe closer to three million. So y- we could pro- in, in, you know, in the more normal times, not these crazy, uh, macroeconomic times of the past few years, you could expect between four to, to six million in excess, uh, of what these estimates show. So just, just so you know, we've reduced the, uh, proposed revenue i- in the budget, but we nevertheless, based off the DLGF estimates, but in reality, we are expecting, uh, from that number at least four, if not six, or possibly even more, uh, million dollars of, of income taxes i- in receipts. Um, and the other numbers are, are basically, uh, the same. In terms of, uh, department budgets, we'll, we'll get to in detail the, the mayor's office, city clerk, common council, uh, on this upcoming budget meeting on Wednesday. Uh, from the mayor's office, not, not to give away the, the, it's a really boring budget. It's a, the three percent standard raise for all the employees, uh, in the office, and then, uh, there's the fringe benefits, health, uh, benefits that did go up by more than three percent. And then I believe the, uh, the community review office is also in here, a, and that's what accounts for the, uh, larger year-over-year change than, than just three or four percent. Um, the admin and finance, you, you see, that's a little higher. They, they, uh, re- than higher than the other departments. Uh, they, they incorporate a lot of the, the, uh, expenses that, uh, go citywide that, that aren't necessarily in their apartment itself, uh, you know, like capital leases and, and payments like that. Oftentimes, those things fall into that department's budget, but they're really, uh, for other, uh, for other departments. Uh, the, the other main one that, that, uh, uh, rises is the, uh, innovation and technology. You see, uh, about a two million dollar increase, and that's almost, uh, entirely accounted for in the build-out of our camera system, uh, that, uh, will go to, to feed into the real-time crime center. Uh, and then finally, the, the fire department here, uh, we, we are in the middle of negotiations. There was the first meeting, uh, that, you know, we got a late start, uh, again, this cycle, so the first meeting was a week and a half ago. Uh, the next, uh, meeting that the, the union's attorney could, could schedule is October eighth. But, uh, given those conversations, we do expect that number to increase, uh, uh, in, in a significant way. The, the placeholder was, uh, the increase that they had this year. So it was a two and a quarter percent increase. But that's one of the areas where wages have fallen behind, uh, in a significant way. So, uh, you know, we, we're in the middle of negotiations. We hope to move quickly here, but we do expect that number to, to move up substantially. So cash reserves, uh, there've been some changes a- as expenditures, and, and particularly, uh, some of the, the bigger capital projects have, have gone out the door. But, uh, by and large, if you look at the, the reserves that are in, uh, you know, the various funds, we are, well, first, you notice we're, we're well in excess of the reserve requirement, which is already, uh, uh, in a pretty conservative way. At one point, uh, we used to have a reserve requirement of, of closer to thirty percent of the general fund for operating expe- or, uh, thirty percent of operating expenses for the reserve requirement for the general fund. And, uh, we've, in the last couple of years, we moved it up to fifty percent because, uh, our cash reserve, uh, and balance has been so high. Um, I, I, for my own, uh, uh, interest, I, I looked at where these reserve funds were four years ago, and in most of them, uh, not except the special revenue, I believe, uh, most of these funds, uh, the, the cash balance is about double what it was in twenty-twenty. So, uh, we, we have, uh, a, a significant, uh, cash position in the city, and, and that's one of the things that, that gets us, gives us confidence as we manage, uh, this uncertainty about revenue and, and costs. So as I mentioned, uh, with the reduction of the revenue projections, uh, you see that the general plus-one deficit is now, uh, projected to be ten-point-eight million, uh, for next year. And, uh, that, that's up from, uh, closer to eight million when we presented in August. And again, that's almost entirely due to the reduction of projected revenues and property taxes and income taxes that the DLGF, um, uh, has, has since given, uh, to us since Au- since the August presentation. But again, if we, uh, you know, i- if we look at this in a, uh, uh, historic way, we expect to get probably an, at least another four, if not six million dollars of revenue, uh, i- in addition to what's included in this. So now you're looking at, uh, a s- four to six million dollar deficit. We, as you know, we, we budget very conservatively in terms of costs, so not, uh, the departments don't spend every penny, uh, uh, of the, the budget. And so, again, that's historically three to five million depend, depending on the year. So when you add those up, i- it's getting very close to an actual, uh, a balanced budget. But, uh, you know, this is not the time to be proposing new, uh, a lot of new things. It, it is a time to be continuing to think, how can we fit into, uh, this, this budget that we have? And, and how can we make this sustainable going forward? But nevertheless, there, there's, uh, with, with the significant reserves we have, uh, we, we are in good shape to, to manage this and, and kind of have a soft landing as opposed to doing drastic things and, and having to do, uh, you know, immediate cuts or, or things like that. But nevertheless, we do need to have an eye toward sustainability and try to drive this deficit down. And, and like I said, you're going to have new revenue. You're going to have some departments that don't spend, uh, you know, what, what's in the budget. But then, like I said, the fire negotiation will also, uh, add to that, and then anything else, uh, that comes up in, in, in the next couple of weeks that, uh, that council and, and the public thinks we're missing, uh, that, that we'll have to find offsets or, or the deficit, uh, at least the budgeted deficit will grow. So looking at, at the history of, of, uh, where the budgeted deficit actually ended up uh, in terms of, uh, the, the realized deficit. So in twenty-two, we had a budgeted six-point-three million dollar deficit, ended up with a two-point-seven million surplus. In twenty-three, we had a thirteen-point-one million deficit, ended up with a nine-point-three million surplus. Uh, again, some of these are because, like I said, some of these are expenditures don't happen. Others, revenue comes in, uh, very differently than what the DLGF, uh, i- is projecting for the following year. And twenty-twenty-four, uh, sixteen-point-one million deficit. And, uh, through the middle of the year, we had a five-point-two million surplus. We do expect to reach a, a, an actual deficit, uh, this year. Uh, again, we're, we are trying to, uh, match the, you know, get closer to our reserve, uh, requirement in the, in the general fund, uh, but, uh, nevertheless, it's not going to be anything. I- it's unlikely to be anything near, uh, what the budgeted level was. And looking in terms of sustainability, uh, going forward, what's driving, uh, this, this structural deficit? Of course, uh, it, it's, uh, you know, our, our above historic level, um, money for, for streets a- and, uh, paving, and that's something that we know is a priority for residents and, and our community, and we want to continue to do that. Uh, we do wish that the state would come forward with more, uh, revenue for, for streets, and, and there's, again, some optimism they may, uh, for local governments, but, uh, i- it's unlikely we're ever going to be able to count on, uh, the gas tax in particular, uh, because that's strained, uh, due to, uh, electrification of our vehicle fleet, uh, vehicles becoming more efficient, and, and both of the, and then, uh, not increasing, you know, there hasn't been a substantial increase in a number of years, so just with inflation. So the gas tax isn't keeping up with inflation, and that's before you realize that for every mile traveled on a street by a vehicle, there are fewer gallons of gasoline being consumed to cover those, uh, costs. So, and this is a, this is not just the, the South Bend issue or a state of Indiana issue. This is a, 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 well, United States issue and, and a gr- worldwide issue if anyone depends on, on gas taxes because, uh, the, the nature of transportation is changing rapidly, and there's got to be a new funding model to pay for, for our streets. And then, as I mentioned before, the, the real-time crime center expansion and, uh, the, the park operations are, are part of what's driving the deficit this year. So I'll leave you with a, a few selected highlights, uh, of what this budget, uh, provides. It, it does have the expansion of our, our, uh, our off, community resource officers, three strategic focus unit. I know there was conversation in, in the, uh, the police budget meeting, and then I think there was a misunderstanding of timing and, and how, uh, how the expansions happened. But, uh, really, this is the level that allows us to sustain, uh, you know, the full teams in both this, the strategic focus unit and the, uh, community resource officers. So that's what we need to be able to sustain that over the long term. A- and we also, so it's an increase of, uh, three sworn officers from the twenty-twenty-four level. Uh, there's the expansion of the cameras and the real-time crime center operations, including, uh, additional op- analysts. Um, there's continuing investments in our homelessness strategy, Animal Resource Center, and then, of course, we, we've talked about the fire negotiations. In terms of neighborhood and, and, uh, infrastructure, uh, again, we, we prioritize the rebuilding our streets initiative, make sure that we stay on top of paving our, our roads. Uh, there's some parks and neighborhood projects, the, the vibrant places grants continues, uh, ignite grants continue. Um, and then there's one neighborhood plan for next year, a budgeted, uh, go- going to Twickenham Hills. This year, w- we've been doing, uh, LaSalle Park and, and River Park. And then obviously, in the past few years, we've done a number of, of neighborhoods. So lots of neighborhood plans and moving forward, and then, uh, the work, uh, begins to, to implement those plans. Uh, there's been an expansion of, of the new dream center, so the, the new, uh, twenty-five million dollar dream center is going to require, uh, more staffing than the old, uh, King Center, and so that's accounted for i- in this year's budget. And then there's also the, the, uh, a- as you saw in the build the budget exercise, housing, uh, is, has risen as a concern. And even though South Bend, we continually land on, uh, compared to the rest of the country, desirable, uh, rankings as affordable, uh, place to live, u- unfortunately, it's still, housing is still out of reach for, for too many folks, or, or just too expensive for too many folks. So we need to build all the units that we can, all types, uh, from, from affordable to market rate, everything in between. And that's why we have the abo- all the above housing strategy and continue to, uh, place investments toward that. And then, uh, of course, we, we need to keep up with inflation and, and the, the market and, and have cost-of-living adjustments for, to attract and retain talent in the city. Um, we've continued to have long-term, an eye toward the long-term with climate, uh, action plan investments, and, uh, want to continue to build the quality of place here and make sure that the experience, when, uh, visitors come to our parks, to our downtown, to other areas of the city, that their experience is, uh, is a good one and something that, uh, they want to keep coming back. So those are the highlights and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? If not, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Uh, Clerk Toronto, is there anyone?
I got a question.
Oh, okay. All right. Councilman Warner.
Yeah, so, uh, we're, we're hearing a lot of different, uh, tax proposals, uh, in the campaigns, and, uh, all of them would kind of affect, uh, city revenues. Um, can you elaborate on, on thoughts on where that's going and how, uh, how that affects us? I, I know any change would be, if next year's a budget year, so it'd be twenty-six and twenty-seven and, and not this budget. But, uh, um, I think we do need to, to, to get our budget to a point where, uh, i- it balances out a little better.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, again, uh, i- in the August meeting, I said we'd always love to, to get it even, you know, get into an even better, uh, fiscal position, uh, i- with the structural deficit. But like I said, the actual deficit next year is likely to be, uh, rather small i- in reality, uh, even with these numbers i- if they hold. So, um, the proposals are all over the place, from, uh, eliminating property taxes a- as a mechanism to, uh, fund governments, to, uh, reducing, you know, there's been talk for years about, uh, uh, reducing the personal property, uh, business, uh, tax, um, you know, so on the, not the real property investments, but on, um, you know, equipment a- and other investments into their business. Uh, if, if not, re- eliminate, reduce, uh, you know, the, the floor at which how far they can go, uh, a- after depreciation. So the, the proposals are all over the board. Uh, there, there are some folks in the le- state legislature who, who, uh, you know, think there would be no impact, but of course, you know, these would have dramatic, you know, these proposals would have dramatic impact on cities and counties across the states, uh, both Republican, Democrats. So, you know, uh, the best hope that we have is legislators listen to their communities and don't do something that, that causes, uh, drastic disruption. A- and a- as you know, there, our budget is, uh, over fifty percent public safety. So there's almost no way you could have a dramatic proposal of cut in revenue without either. A- and they have talked about providing cities the opportunity to raise income taxes to compensate for the lost revenue. So either new revenue to compensate for the lost revenue or, uh, cuts to not just other departments that some may, may call more, uh, discretionary, but they would also likely reach into public safety budgets. And so it's, uh, we hope that, uh, there will be wisdom at the State House and, and they won't lead to something, a crazy proposal that pulls the rug out from every community in Indiana.
Thank you. I have, then, one comment if I may. But, so it, we've got eleven meetings here, but there's also twelve bills, and all twelve bills have two committee hearings. So there's another twenty-four meetings. So there's really thirty-five different public meetings involved in the budget.
We can start counting that way, too. H- however, whatever counting, whatever metric you want to use, we have a lot, and we, we definitely exceed, uh, other jurisdictions in our region.
We, here we don't have enough, and I, I think thirty-five is a lot, but thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, um, briefly, so in, uh, if I'm hearing you correctly, for twenty- for 2025, we do expect a small, real deficit. So in those cases, we would be pulling from cash reserves for the first time in a while.
Well, this year, we expect to, I mean, we, like I said, we kept accumulating. We are double the cash position from 2020 in the general fund. And so
We have been growing the cash reserves.
It's been growing. And part of it's the American, I mean, there are a lot of different revenue sources that came in to help do, to realize that. But even when we were purposely trying to spend down these reserves to get them closer to the reserve requirement, even when we were doing that with one time expenses, we nevertheless ended up with a surplus after, you know, trying to do. So then we just kept adding to the cash reserves. And so at some point, we do need to, you know, get those reserves to closer to the level where we need them to be. But also, we need to get our, at that point, when we get closer to the reserve requirement, at that point, we really need to have a good idea that we have a balanced structural deficit.
And then I do just have a comment. I just want to congratulate you and all of us in the city for receiving gold certificate, lead gold certification. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Just one question, Mayor. If, as we are looking for ways to tighten our bill, as we say, what areas are the first areas that you think about where you could make cuts at in order to help with the deficit?
Well, I mean, we talked about this in the August meeting. There were a number of quote temporary programs that we started with the infusion of federal funds. And we haven't sunsetted, I can't, I mean, maybe there's one or two that we have sunsetted. But many of them have not been sunsetted in this budget. But some of them have been reduced and some of them have an eye toward a softer landing in that sense. And really, we've got to figure out, some of these programs are popular. These programs were forward looking and achieving goals that we need to have as a city. And so trying to figure out what is the right balance between the traditional services, police, fire, you know, economic development, parks, recreation, those streets, paving, all neighborhood infrastructure. Of course, we've got to do that. But there are some of these other things that can move the needle for our community have a good impact. So those are the things that we're balancing. But, you know, I think the first things we need to be looking at are those discretionary programs and see which ones are most important and which ones we think we'd be okay with sunsetting. So if we want to do further cuts, those are natural places to look, sunsetting those programs. And there's also oftentimes a natural flow, ebb and flow with these programs. So if you recall, we had to increase staff numbers to be able to deploy these new programs. And, you know, I know, I know we've heard from community members and council members and even our own administration, we don't just want to, you know, we're not, you know, like, we don't just cut something off and, you know, kick people to the curb. There's usually a natural progression. So one thought that we're going to be implementing is a soft hiring freeze. And so as people, as folks move on to other things, if there is a discretionary program that kind of becomes vacant, that's a good opportunity to kind of say, now is time to, you know, is this time to end it? And you don't fill the position and you end the program. So those are kind of the ways, when we talk about soft landings, that's one strategy to make sure we have soft landings.
Anyone else? At this time, I'll now go to the public portion. Clerk Torotto, is anyone want to speak in favor or in favor?
I do not see anyone from the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition?
Good evening. St. Castle 422 Kennedy Drive, budget enthusiast. Good evening. I'd like to point out that in terms of roads, if the Buttigieg Mueller administrations had not taken over the downtown streets from the state, we would have the state paving, salting, curbing and doing all that. So on top of all that we had, now we have that instead of the state doing those roads. I think comparing it to 2020, there was, of course, a lot of COVID funds and that was an anomaly. Our required cash reserves are 155 million. We are above that. I'd like to point out that when I first started doing this, we had, there were 1,000 city employees. There's now over 1,200. So that has expanded. I recently looked, we have a total debt of 462 million, $746,327 total debt. 462 million. That means that every man, woman and child now owes $4,242.61 on debt alone. I'd like that to sink in. Every woman and man, woman and child, every single person, $4,200 in debt we're carrying. This year alone, the city is going to have to pay $33,967,249 on debt, just this year. That's the principal and interest and leases and all that. So if we didn't have debt right now, we'd have an extra $34 million to spend. What would we do with $34 million? So one of the, and we have over 68 active tax abatements. We've got to stop giving away millions of dollars to just a few people. For example, there's something coming up where a developer wants $4 million for 13 deluxe condos on the river. Well, then go find some investors, because we shouldn't have to give our $4 million to a developer claiming poverty. That's not a good use, those abatements and those funds. So I'd like you to really think about that. In terms of response, being responsible, deficit spending is not responsible. It just isn't, whether it's soft or hard, it's not responsible. That is not what you were elected to do. Over 100,000 people elected the nine of you to be good stewards of the money. No matter what the mayor proposes, your signatures are on the line. 100,000 people are counting on your good judgment. Now, I don't know if any of you are trained in a budget. I'm kind of self-trained. But it really bothers me that we aren't thinking about lowering debt so that we're lowering that 34 million that we're having to pay out every year. The more responsible thing to do would be cut things back, not have deficit spending, and then pay down debt so that future generations aren't having to pay 4,000 bucks on debt. And we have more to spend every year on the community. We're getting really strapped with debt and deficits, and that's just not responsible. So I really hope that you give some consideration to what I've said and really look at the numbers and what you took on oath of office to do for the citizens of South Bend. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
I'm Brendan Crumlich. I have an office on Sugar Maple Court here in South Bend. My father always had a saying, "It's always easier to spend somebody else's money." That's the case here. All of the taxpayers are contributing their money to this city, and you folks are charged with spending it. The mayor is asking for a deficit budget. He's asking to spend more money than the city has. As she said previously, it's simply outrageous. The city of Fort Wayne has more than double the population of South Bend and a budget of 263 million. City of South Bend has a budget of 417 million with half the population. So I think it's outrageous for us to be overspending when we already have excessive reserves and so forth. So I just ask you, stop the spending. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do not see anyone else wishing to speak under this bill.
At this time, the public hearing on Bill 50-24 is now closed. And we're not voting or anything on it. So, right.
You will need make a recommendation.
Okay, all right. And I will now entertain a motion.
I'll recommend, make a recommendation that Bill 5024 goes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second?
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Torotto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson?
I did hear, I was thinking, because I thought we were going to do no recommendation. That's what.
You thinking about how to do that?
Yeah.
So what you would, I can have the parliamentary explain or you can explain that, we have a vote on the floor.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to send it to the full council with a favorable recommendation. They have, you have three options, no recommendation, unfavorable recommendation or favorable. The current motion is for favorable. So it's a yes or no vote.
So I have to say nay, because I want to, no recommendations. Nay.
Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Good Rogers? Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Seven ayes?
Right. Bill 50-24 will go to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Torotto, would you please give Bill 51-24 a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's 2025 budget and leaving the tax and fixing the rate of the taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is, Chair. This was heard of personal and finance today and was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right, as a petitioner, present, I see she's online. I suggest you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening. Amy Hill, General Manager and CEO for Transpo with offices at 1401 South Lafayette Boulevard. Are you able to pull up the presentation or should I share my screen again?
Amy, you can share your screen.
Just one moment. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes, we can see.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present virtually today. We do have Chris Kubazak, our controller, that is there in person. Just a brief overview of Transpo. We're currently at 106 employees. We'll touch on our local, state and federal funding. And we currently operate a fleet of 50 fixed route buses that provides our traditional fixed route service along designated routes with bus stop locations throughout the cities of South Bend and Mishawaka. And then we operate a smaller fleet of 20 paratransit vans for our access service that's designed for individuals who may, because of a disability, not be able to ride the regular fixed route service. There is an application process for that service that does require medical certification. And again, we serve both the cities of South Bend and Mishawaka. Looking over 2024, our fleet replacement program as of this year, our fixed route fleet is 100% compressed natural gas. Our first CNG buses will actually be eligible for replacement in 2026. The useful life of a bus is 12 years. On the paratransit side, we are eligible for replacement now. Those have a shorter lifespan of five years. It is challenging with receiving funding for those vehicles. They have more than doubled in cost over the last several years. As part of our federal requirements to be eligible for competitive grants, we are conducting a fuel feasibility study this year that will look at both our current fueling options and then looking longer range, what will be the best option to get us closer to a zero admission fleet. Many of you may recall, and throughout '22 and '23, we conducted our Connect Transit Plan that was a comprehensive operational analysis that looked at transportation across our region. We partnered with MACOG in the inner urban trolley to complete that. We will be implementing our short term network, which is budget neutral this fall and winter. And then we do have our additional funding network that prioritizes future investments in public transportation across the region should additional funding become available. We've also been focused on bringing new technology, including real time information and bus tracking. We have been doing internal testing on that and the public portion will be rolling out shortly. All our vehicles are now equipped with automatic next stop and ADA announcements, which take place throughout both the systems in South Bend and Mishawaka. We've really focused on expanding our ridership programs. We had a great year with our K through 12 summer travel program in which all students can ride for free the months of June and July and August. We set a record number of rides with over 37,000. We've also worked on expanding our other programs with South Bend School Corporation, School City of Mishawaka. And then you can see the other colleges, universities and schools throughout our region where the students are able to ride and the schools are then covering the cost of those rides at a discounted rate. Like many transit agencies across the country, we've been struggling with an operator shortage. We are seeing our hiring levels coming back up, getting closer to being full staff. We're also experiencing a shortage on the maintenance side with our mechanics and service line individuals who are responsible for fueling and cleaning the buses. We have dramatically reduced our number of missed trips and we've been able to maintain our current service levels despite the shortage. When we look at our budget heading into 2025, we do have a balanced budget. It's just slightly higher than 2024 with just about a $16,000 increase. It's a very tight budget. Costs continue to rise, yet our funding has remained the same or decreased. So it's very challenging as we move forward. When we look at the local tax revenue, the majority of that is coming from property taxes. We get about $4 million a year in property taxes, $260,000 in excise tax, and then about $800,000 in the local income tax. On the federal, I'm sorry, on the state side, we have the Public Mass Transportation Fund, which funds all the public transportation agencies across the state. That is a formula funding that's managed by INDOT. This was previously a line item in the general budget for the state of Indiana. It's now moved under INDOT. This funding has not been increased in over 10 years. So as we enter the next legislative session down in Indianapolis, we'll be advocating for increased funding across the state. On the federal side, we do receive federal assistance, formula funding for both operating assistance for fixed route and paratransit, as well as federal preventative maintenance to help maintain our assets mainly, which is our vehicles. Those funding is down a little bit, about, well, close to 20% on the federal operating side. There had been some influx over the last several years as a result of the pandemic and those resources are now no longer available. On the passenger fare side, we've been able to keep our fares affordable. It is a dollar to ride our fixed route service. And then the FTA allows us to charge double that fare, $2 for our paratransit service. So it's actually closer to $8 to provide a fixed route ride as ridership is still recovering from the pandemic. And then to provide a paratransit ride is closer to $12. So very heavily subsidized there. The lease revenue is down slightly. That's mainly because we are down to one parking garage that we leased back to the city of South Bend. That's the parking garage at Main and Colfax. And that lease will end in 2025 and ownership of the parking garage will turn over to the city. As far as advertising revenue, it's up slightly heading into 2025. We've been very successful with our third party advertiser in really increasing those revenues over the last several years. When we look at our expenses for 2025, you can see the majority of our budget is wages and benefits that accounts for 77% of our budget. We are in the middle of a four year contract with the Amalgamated Transit Union for our fixed route and maintenance operators. Our access paratransit contract will be coming up later this year. So over the last several rounds of negotiations, we really focused on wages to ensure that we are offering a competitive rate, also to assist with attracting and most importantly, retaining those employees once they're on board. Our benefits have remained pretty flat mainly because we are part of the St. Joe County Health Plan. Our health insurance rates have been flat over the last several years. So that's helped to offset some of our other increasing costs. Fuel expenses have been pretty stable. Again, compressed natural gas has been very competitive for us. We do a green fleet analysis and at this time, Uh, we do a green fleet, uh, analysis and at this time, CNG remains the best option for us, but as I mentioned earlier, we are looking at both, um, their fuel feasibility, uh, study and zero admission for the longer term, what fuel sources are gonna be the best option for us. Uh, the rest of the items, utilities and insurance, services, materials, and supplies are all pretty close to where they were back in twenty twenty four. Uh, overall here, you can look at the last several years for our operating expenses. Years twenty twenty one through twenty twenty three are based on our audited financial statements with Crowe, uh, each year it's been a clean financial audit. Uh, we did see a, a little decrease back in twenty twenty two when we were dealing with our operator shortage and now you can see those operating expenses go up as we become closer to being fully staffed. And again, same on the labor side, uh, again, there's been some variations mainly due to the staffing shortage and some increased overtime. Uh, we've been very fortunate that in the last couple of training rounds, we are receiving, um, more applications, more qualified employees, including many uh, drivers that already have their CDLs, which helps reduce the training time. Over the last several years, you can see our local, um, income tax funding, uh, that did take a, a dip down in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, but now has stabilized over the last couple of years. We always talk about, uh, funding uncertainty, um, much like the mayor mentioned and potential changes and and tax funding long term, there's certainly a concern when you look at them, our budget and the majority of our local funding is coming from property taxes. And as I mentioned with the, the PMTF, there has not been a significant increase to that line item, um, in several years. And there's also concerns long term with federal funding for public transportation, so, uh, keeping a close eye on that, we work very closely with both our state and federal legislators. Uh, we are continuing like everyone to see increasing costs, both to operate service and capital costs as well. Um, and while we've been lucky on the health insurance side, property and casualty insurance continues to go up. Um, as I mentioned earlier, our ridership is still recovering from the pandemic. Uh, prior to March twenty twenty, we had increasing ridership for the first time in many years. You can see there has our ridership is slowly coming back. Um, through August of twenty twenty four, we are up fifteen percent compared to last year, uh, which is about ninety percent of our pre-pandemic ridership, so, um, we hope to be back to that number soon and continuing to grow that ridership. Um, we also always receive requests for additional service, we know it can be challenging when our service ends around six or seven PM on a Saturday and we don't operate on a Sunday. Uh, those two issues are addressed in our, our Connect Transit Plan with the additional funding network long term. Again, as I mentioned, our Connect Transit Plan, all those details are available online at connecttransitplan.com, we will be implementing that short term network later this year. Uh, that will really help streamline some of our services and improve, uh, some of our existing routes to better serve, uh, the needs across South Bend and Mishawaka. Uh, we continue to increase our outreach and partnerships to really focus on where we can assist with accessibility across our region. Um, and certainly need to mention employment opportunities, we continue to hire, uh, drivers and mechanics, we'll have another training class starting in early October. Um, our service line, they are responsible for fueling and cleaning our buses, um, and then we have a couple of administrative positions open as well. Uh, that is it in a very, um, quick overview, uh, it is, has been a challenging year for our budget. Uh, we are proud that we were able to get a balanced budget for twenty twenty five. Um, we do expect twenty twenty six to be very challenging, um, as we move forward with a lot of the uncertainty, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Good job, very, very thorough, always.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll now go to the public hearing portion. Uh, Clerk Toronto, is anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill fifty one dash twenty four?
I do not see anyone from the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone from the public in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing portion on Bill fifty one dash twenty four is now closed, and I will now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to send Bill fifty one twenty four to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
There's been a motion and a second, Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Good Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right, uh. Bill fifty one twenty four will be sent to the full council with a favorable re- uh, recommendation. I will now entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes.
The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding the bills that were just heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill forty one twenty four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located seven three four Notre Dame Avenue, Councilman District Number Four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, Councilman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, Bill forty one twenty four was heard in the committee of the whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, I would now entertain a motion regarding Bill forty one twenty four.
Move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and Clerk Toronto, the role, please.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Good Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, Bill forty one twenty four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill forty three twenty four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located five six one four Main Street, Councilman District Number Five in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, Counselor Lee, is there a committee report?
Yes. Bill fifty three twenty four was heard in the committee of the whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, at this time I will entertain a motion regarding Bill forty three twenty four.
Move for passage.
Second.
Been moving second, and Clerk Toronto, the role, please.
Councilmember Good Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, Bill forty three twenty four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give substitute Bill forty five twenty four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the east west alley between one hundred block of East Sample Street and Ohio Street, including its turn south connecting to Ohio Street and also the first north south alley east of South Michigan Street, running between East Sample Street and Ohio Street.
Thank you, Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from, from the committee of the whole regarding substitute Bill forty five twenty four?
Yes, substitute Bill forty five dash twenty four was heard in the committee of whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will entertain a motion regarding substitute Bill forty five twenty four.
For passage of substitute forty five twenty four.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and Clerk Toronto, the role, please.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Good Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, Bill forty five twenty four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give substitute Bill forty six twenty four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the first east west bound alley south of Prairie Avenue between Glen Street and north south alley east of Brookfield Street.
Thank you, Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding substitute Bill forty six twenty four?
Yes, substitute Bill forty six dash twenty four was heard in the committee of the whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
For passage of substitute forty six twenty four.
Second.
Been moved in pass, Clerk Toronto, the role, please.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Good Rogers. Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill forty six twenty four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill forty seven twenty four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number one zero nine seven eight dash two three, which fixes maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of executive departments of the city of South Bend for calendar year twenty twenty four to add a full-time employee to one existing position.
Thank you, Counselor Lee, is there a committee of the whole report for Bill forty seven twenty four?
Yes, forty, um, Bill forty seven dash twenty four was heard in the committee of the whole, comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would like to entertain a motion.
Move for passage.
Second.
Been moving in second, and Clerk Toronto, the role, please.
Councilmember Good Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill forty seven twenty four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give substitute Bill forty eight twenty four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Counselor Lee, is there a committee report for substitute Bill forty eight twenty four?
Yes, substitute Bill forty eight dash twenty four was heard in the committee of the whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
For passage of substitute forty eight twenty four.
Second.
Been moving second, and Clerk Toronto, the role, please.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Good Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, Bill forty eight twenty four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please take a breath and give Bill forty nine twenty four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year twenty twenty four of ninety thousand dollars from general fund number one zero one, seventy thousand from the Parks and Recreation Fund number two zero one, three hundred and forty three thousand from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund number two zero two, two million eight hundred and sixty eight thousand six hundred and thirty from the Department of Community Investments Grant Fund number two one two, three million five hundred and one thousand three hundred and ninety from the Local Income Tax Public Safety Fund number two four nine, six hundred and fifteen thousand from the IT Innovation Three One One Cost Center Fund number two seven nine, two hundred thousand from the Water Works Operations Fund number six twenty, two million from the Water Works Capital Fund number six two two, sixty one thousand five hundred from the Sewerage Works Operations Fund number six four one, three hundred and thirty nine thousand three six five from the Century Center Operations Fund number six seventy and twenty thousand from the Self-Funded Employee Benefits Fund number seven eleven.
Thank you, Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from, from the committee of the whole regarding Bill forty nine twenty four?
Yes. Uh, Bill forty nine twenty four was heard in the committee of whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill forty nine twenty four.
I move for passage.
Second.
Been moving second, and the role, please.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Good Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill forty nine twenty four has been adopted.
Right, I ask a question or make a statement.
Yes.
Um, as we look at Bill, uh, twenty, I mean fifty twenty four and fifty fifty one twenty four, that was only for public hearing only. And so the actual vote on the two thousand twenty five budget will be Monday, October the fourteenth. So it does not, you know, appear in third reading, cause it was only in public hearing, just want to class, this one, clarify that for the public.
You're fine, because you, you didn't read it in third reading, I just wanna make that statement, if you look at those two bills, they were public hearing only fifty and fifty one, but the actual budget would be voted, uh, in October.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
No problem.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, resolutions. This is the portion of the council meeting where common council here bills filed as proposed resolutions. And at this time, we are asking for the petitioner to come up, and Clerk Toronto, would you please, Resolution twenty four thirty?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as six nineteen Sherman Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one six and six twenty Sherman Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one six and ten twenty one and a half dash ten twenty three and a half, Lincoln Way West, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one six, an economic revalidation area for purposes of an eight-year real property tax abatement for Property Bros LLC.
Thank you, petitioner.
Eric Lovitz, Director of Growth and Opportunity, offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. Before you, for your consideration, is a declaratory resolution for an eight-year multifamily development real property tax abatement for the petitioner.
I'm gonna interrupt there, Eric, and just say that this bill was heard in Community Investment Committee and comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
I'm sorry.
It's all good, now it's yours.
Thank you, Counselor Warner. Thank you, uh, the abatement is for Property Bros LLC. So, um, in particular, there are, uh, currently three parcels that this tax abatement impacts. Property Bros LLC is actually going to subdivide one of the parcels and build four brand-new duplexes essentially on the corner of Lincoln Way and Sherman, three of the duplexes will be on Sherman and the fourth will be on the corner, the northeast corner of Lincoln Way and Sherman. This is a continuation of a project that Property Bros LLC has, uh, began last year. You'll recall that Jordan Richardson, uh, received a tax abatement through the common council for phase one of this project. He rehabbed a building on, a fourplex on Scott Street, he rehabbed a duplex on Cottage Grove. He is currently in the process of building a brand-new duplex on Sherman as part of this project. Um, we thank you for council's confirmation last year of this tax abatement and we're presenting to you, uh, tax abatement for him to continue, um, that development. The total investment for these four duplexes is over one point four million dollars, according to Property Bros LLC. Um, you know, it's just significant investment by someone committed to the near northwest neighborhood. Um, Jordan, um, talks fondly of the neighborhood, having grown up there and really wants to give back. Um, he has a business partner, Tony Ruiz, who is here in person. I believe Jordan is on and can talk about the project in more detail if needed. Uh, but basically, we're looking at an eight-year property tax abatement for this development. Um, one thing that wasn't mentioned during the meeting earlier this afternoon was that the lots are actually, were city-owned. Um, uh, Mr. Richardson received them via a purchase agreement with the South Bend Redevelopment Commission, so even though the estimated annual taxes for these vacant lots is only six hundred and fifty dollars a year, the actual revenues are zero. Um, so we have a developer who wants to come in, have these lots and put, you know, new housing on them and serve the neighborhood. So we're excited that we can bring this to you. Um, over the, you know, the life of the abatement, you know, these properties after they're developed will bring in, you know, roughly, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, in terms of total tax liability. Um, lo- most of that will be abated, but those are, that's investment that's happening and once the abatement expires after year eight, you know, those, that's tax revenue that's coming in. And once the abatement expires after year eight, you know, those, that's tax revenue that's coming in. And we're building a sustainable, you know, community, you know, in that block where there's currently vacant lots. Um, these are just, uh, my colleague Mark had showed these at the five o'clock meeting. Um, this is the developments from phase one. Um, you know, these were the building on Cottage Grove, which is on the left, and the fourplex on Scott were vacant. Um, I think that Property Bros bought the Scott Street property for ninety-three thousand dollars, I believe, and, um, you know, Property Bros has gone through with their commitments. Um, just, this was not shown at the five o'clock meeting. This was kind of, Jordan had provided this to us. The abatement that you, uh, would approve, you know, this declaratory resolution, if you're so kind, would be the house on the bottom right, that would be the Lincoln Way Sherman Corner. Um, if you go up Sherman, um, it would be the last two houses on the right, and then the house that's on the left. So that's what this abatement would apply to. The one that's colored kind of grayish is an existing building that there, that's there. Just north of that on Sherman is the duplex that he's currently building now. So this is kind of just an image of what he was thinking that area could look like. So I'll pause there. Um, I know Tony's here, if you have any questions, and I think Jordan is on as well.
At this time, I would ask, um, Tony, if you would like to come up and say anything. And, uh, first, Jordan, I'll yield to you, um, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Um, yes, uh, Jordan Richardson, offices at twelve fifty-one North Eddie Street, South Bend, Indiana, course six six one seven.
And thank you so much for, um, all of your work that you've been doing in that area. Um, I know a lot of us council have gone to, uh, some of the, the first initial ribbon cutting that you've had, and, um, I am excited to see, um, some life coming back into the neighborhood, um, on that side of town as well. So I appreciate, um, the housing stock that you're bringing, uh, back to the community for, um, low to middle to moderate income families. So I appreciate your service. Any other council?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I know, uh, Counselor Lee, you have something to say.
Yes. To give anyone else some?
No, go ahead.
No, I just want to say that, uh, for a long time, that area off of Lincoln Way and Sherman has been, uh, forgotten about and, and thought of not, not productive. So to see this village getting ready to be put into that area and to fight against the blight that's over there, I'm excited about that in the first district and excited for this opportunity of city partnering with, with Property Bros and, um, minority-owned company to, to bring this housing to, uh, this area. So we're looking forward to, uh, new life coming to that area.
Anyone else? You have anything to say, Tony? Would you like to come up? Yep, nope, have to come up. Say your name and address for the record.
My name is Tony Ruiz, born and raised here in South Bend, address is eight thirty-seven Garden Lane. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for considering this project. Obviously, um, this is a neighborhood that has been neglected for decades. I actually grew up on Longdale myself, so these are the same streets that I grew up in. So it's definitely a privilege to be able to give back and build a community that I was, you know, able to grow up to myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, do you have any other comments?
Yes, um, a- as always, um, it's an honor to, to be here. Um, you know, as we prepare to take on quite a, a, a brutal challenge, and I say brutal because of the way that the housing market is, we, we all know and have experienced the ups and downs of it. Um, it's no secret that things are getting much more expensive. And we're doing, and I know as a city, uh, you know, congratulate the council, the mayor, and then folks that are busy at work to make sure things can stay as affordable in our neighborhood as possible. But it is no secret that, that things are rising. And so, uh, with us taking on the challenge to build new housing stock um, on vacant parcels that are a main, that's a main corridor in the city of South Bend, really, um, excites Tony and I. Uh, we've, we've, uh, put the challenge down and doing rehabs, uh, over the last couple of years and excited to have a new build actually standing and going through its final, uh, drywall and, and flooring and trim inspections. It's a really cool feeling. It's a really cool, uh, thing to show my mom, who's also very proud, his, his family, Tony's family and siblings, and, and be able to mentor and guide them and then show them what's possible, um, coming from little to nothing. So, um, I just want to say thank you to, to the committee who last year made that possible. Uh, again, very tremendous effort, uh, especially with the housing market fluctuating because obviously, a lot of this is tied to, um, uh, mortgage rates and, and appraisal gaps and all of these things that, all these words that could just kind of go over our heads sometimes and we, and we don't, you know, we don't think as much about that effect, small developers in particular. So, uh, we just want to say thank, and, and we will continue to push. And as we get better, uh, we want to continue to, to show you all what we can do, um, as a minority-based, uh, developers and developers that are working together to, to form, uh, to form movement, uh, in the northwest. So thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilman Lee that has a question.
Yes, um, Jordan, I, I'd like just for you to explain how important, as a small minority, uh, developer, how important is that piece of the tax abatement in order to make a one point four million dollar investment in an area that's been distressed?
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you, Councilman Lee. Um, I'll, I'll take that question on as best as I can. And the, the, the best way that I can, I can say that is that, uh, number one, it's important for, for, for all of us, right? Um, number one, it is important for the city because as those lots sit vacant and the city sends, spends money mowing the grass on them. And I know mowing the grass may not seem like a lot of money, but when you have to mow it several times a year, you're sitting on a lot of lots that, that dollar figure does add up. So number one, being able to take a, a piece of land and put something valuable on it, um, that does in, uh, increase the city's, um, tax income is, is awesome, right? Um, the second thing is that we're also able to provide some, some housing for folks that, that, that as we know, are, we are in a housing shortage, so the housing option stock is not as available to, to everyone as we, as we hope. So with, with those things being said, from the city's perspective, from, from a small-scale developer's, uh, perspective, um, it, there, there's lever, there's levers, right, that, that, that we understand that must come into play on a financial scale that makes projects possible. Um, so when we're able to, to utilize, um, as, as we've said before, the, the, the city's hard-earned, uh, money to invest in properties and, and things that will then turn around and make our corners and blocks beautiful, um, it is very extremely important. Um, so again, we cannot thank you a- enough for the allowance of an abatement um, that will help essentially projects like this that are, that are very financially, um, challenging from all ends, um, even from your local lenders that, that believe in these projects, but have, but things just have to pencil. Um, and so when we're able to, um, work with, um, the city and/or local contractors and/or local financiers who all play a part in this to make it pencil, that's what the, 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 the tax abatement helps us do. It helps us to create dreams into reality. So, um, it i- it is, it is a pretty, pretty thorough process. It, like, like you said, the, the project that we brought before you all last year, um, it is wrapping up and we're going into phase two, um, here with, with, with the, with these projects that, that's before you. But, um, it, it does have a huge impact, bigger, bigger than most, than most would understand, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you so much. With that, I will turn to the public, um, to see if there's anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution twenty-four thirty.
I do not see anyone from the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Thank you. Same said. Anyone speaking in opposition of twenty-four thirty?
Good evening. Sue Keston, four oh two two Kennedy Drive. Um, I'd like to point out that there's a TIF deficit of three point five million right now. And, uh, so all these abatements that you, you know, just mindlessly rubber stamp, they add up. And we do have TIF deficits. Um, I think the abatements are too long and they're too great a percentage. Um, I think you need to look at other communities that only do like a five-year or less and have a less percentage. Um, there's certainly, as I've sent to you, sixty other ways to incentivize developers and, and help them out. Um, so I, I'd be curious if any of you know what the total abatement is sitting right now for those sixty-eight people, uh, that you've given abatements to? How many millions of dollars? Do you have any idea what you've rubber stamped? Yeah, probably not.
Well, thank you. It's not your turn, the, the question, you could give your comments, but we can get that number for you if you like.
Well, my point is that, um, once again, I, I think eight years is too long. Uh, the percentages are too high and they need to be scaled back. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak.
Thank you.
Just one common, um, just, you know, as you know, we submit the annual tax abatement report, and it's basically a giant spreadsheet that includes, um, what the tax abatement recipients report on Form CF one. So on there is, um, their reported expenditures and other information, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lovitz. I appreciate that. With that being said, this, the public portion is now closed. Counsel, I'll turn to you. What say you regarding Resolution twenty-four thirty?
I do have a comment, if I may.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So TIF is not, uh, three and a half million. Your report that you sent, and, uh, I, I read that email, all that is, that is in that report you sent is the revenue and the income. Uh, it fails to take into account cash at hand, uh, which is pretty important for TIF because in TIF, uh, it's, it's pretty uncommon that an allocation is made and the money is spent, uh, not only in the same year, but even years down the road. For example, three hundred LaSalle was approved in twenty seventeen. Uh, the TIF funds, I believe, were allocated out of the twenty eighteen TIF budget and then weren't spent to twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. So you have to look at cash at hand, and the report you sent doesn't include cash at hand. And you also have to look at future commitments because as I said, most of the time we're making commitments in TIF. It's, it's two years plus till the, the developer actually builds the building. And then this property tax abatement right here does not affect TIF. Um, so that, that, you know, comment you made there is totally incorrect too, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correct.
And it has nothing to do with?
Period you had, yes. Whatever that was, it didn't say a period of time on it. The revenues were less than the expenses. But you have to take in account cash at hand. Sometimes the, the, the funds for twenty twenty-one will sit there for three years before we actually spend. So in that period of hand, yes, there was more spent and was brought in. But you, you have to take into account the other years where their money wasn't spent. And it's, so, thank you.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion regarding Resolution twenty-four thirty.
I'd like to move, um, twenty-four thirty for adoption.
Second. Been moving second. Clerk Toronto, the role, please.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Resolution twenty-four thirty has been adopted. Bills on first reading. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill fifty-two twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at eight twelve LaSalle Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill fifty-two twenty-four to BZA for October seventh and then to zone in an annexation for public hearing and third reading on October fourteenth.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried. Please give Bill fifty-three twenty-four a first reading, Clerk Toronto.
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at eight zero nine Walnut Street, Councilmanic District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill fifty-three twenty-four to BZA for October seventh and for zoning annexation for public hearing and third reading October fourteenth.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill fifty-four twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reaffirming ordinance number one zero eight nine one dash two two and fixing the annual pay and monetary fringe benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Police Department for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
All in favor for sending Bill fifty-four twenty-four to person on finance for public hearing and third reading on October fourteen? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill fifty-five twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing maximum wages of the Teamster employees for calendar years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight.
I'd like to entertain a motion regarding Bill fifty-five twenty-four to person on finance for public hearing and third reading on October fourteenth.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill fifty-six twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the mayor for the calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Entertain a motion to send fifty-six twenty-four to person on finance for public hearing and third reading for October fourteenth.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill fifty-seven twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the common council members for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill fifty-seven twenty-four. Then send to person on finance for first reading on October fourteenth.
Move for passage.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, Bill fifty-eight twenty-four, please.
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the South Bend City Clerk for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
I'd like to entertain a motion regarding Bill fifty-eight twenty-four, being sent to person on finance for first reading and public hearing on October fourteen.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, Bill fifty-nine twenty-four, please.
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing maximum salaries and wages of deputies and non-bargaining employees appointed by the city clerk of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill fifty-nine twenty-four to send to person on finance for public hearing and third reading for October fourteen.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill sixty dash twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of executive departments of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the calendar year twenty twenty-five.
I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill sixty twenty-four to send to person on finance for first public hearing and third reading on October fourteen.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. At this time, counsel, do you have any unfinished business? Is there any new business?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sherri Bolton Simpson.
Thank you. Um, President McBride. Um, by now, probably all members know that I sent a, a statement to the clerk and to all council members. And I'd like that put in the official record, um, put in official record. And I'd just like to reiterate a statement I made that respectful disagreement is the conduit to better outcomes. So let us all move forward for a better South Bend and an effective council.
Thank you. So noted. It will be put in the record.
Thank you.
Any other new business? At this time, we'll return to the- At this time, we'll return to the privilege of the floor. Disrespectful root or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and the residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time for this portion of the meeting shall be 30 minutes. Individuals should not be permitted to address the topics in which the council has heard previously on tonight's agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by the individual during the presence of the floor to the appropriate council member and to request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review. And topics assigned shall be responded to by the next scheduled council meeting. Welcome to the privilege of the floor. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'd like to enter this into the record first, please.
Okay.
Good evening. Sue Kessel for 22 Kennedy Drive. Why am I here before you? I've lived here over 30 years. I've been going to various city meetings for over 20 years. Council meetings, animal control meetings, redevelopment meetings, crime meetings, and of course, budget meetings. As an introvert, that isn't comfortable. I'm here because I care. I care that you're spending more than Alcart, Mishawaka, and Fort Wayne combined instead of paying down debt and being good stewards of our tax dollars. I care that you keep passing deficit budgets instead of passing legally required balance budgets. I care that our debt is now over $4,000 a person. So I have to wonder, how many of you know how to track cash levels in relation to bond rates? How to track encumbrances, sinking funds, future cost of money, cash projections, bond ratings? How about the 20 formulas you can apply to a budget to see if it's healthy or not? Are you just sitting there in a fancy suit with rubber stamp in your hand? The nine of you have over 100,000 people counting on you that need you to know how to read, monitor, and vote on over $400 million, which should actually be a lot less. Apparently, none of you read the monthly reports since you guys didn't even know they had been stopped since March. If you don't know how to read balance sheets, debt ratios, future values, then you need to either get educated on it or resign. It's a pitiful time when a regular citizen must sound the alarm to this train wreck budget. Have any of you taken the state classes on municipal budgets offered by AIM? That's Accelerate Indiana Municipalities. I sent you an AIM budget handbook, but didn't hear back from any of you. What happens when we have another market correction like we did in 2008? They're actually predicting one. The most asked question I get is, is it gross incompetence or corruption? I don't know what to tell people. Either way, it's a misappropriation of people's hard-earned tax dollars. Will you pass this train wreck? Or will you have the integrity to say no to the mayor and administration? I guess that's the $463 million question. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, if you would please come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Bryant, and I live in Maple Lane Apartments. And laws. Laws are rules that bind people living in a community. Laws protect our general safety and ensure our rights as citizens against abuses by other people, by organizations, and by the government itself. Does any council member disagree with this definition? A law is a rule made by an authority and must be obeyed. A law is commonly made by a government, which citizens must follow or face punishment. Does any council member disagree with this definition? Assault. Assault in Indiana is defined as an intentional act that causes someone to feel intimidated, harm, or unwanted physical contact. Assault can be committed through words, gestures, or actions, and doesn't require actual physical contact. Does any council member disagree with this definition? Sheila, you broke the law in Indiana and assaulted Logan Foster in the council chambers on May 13, 2024. You need to resign from this council immediately. I am very upset when I found out, when I found out how some members in our council interpret the laws as it applies to them. You could all do better, but you're not. The ones who do wrong and the ones that contone the wrongdoing are the ones, all in the same to me.
That's it. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sarah Foster, 1138 College Street. Tonight, I would like to again publicly thank Dr. Oliver Davis for his public acknowledgement of Vice President Nizgatsky's assault and attempted battery on Logan Foster on May 13. I would also like to publicly thank Councilwoman Bolden Simpson for her acknowledgement earlier this evening of Vice President Nizgatsky's wrongful actions against my husband, Logan Foster, on May 13. Councilwoman Bolden Simpson, thank you for setting an example of positive and strong leadership, especially for all of the women who look up to you. As a citizen, a woman, and a wife, Vice President Nizgatsky's actions on May 13 were extremely disappointing. That is not the kind of example that our elected female leadership should be setting for women, young and old, across the city of South Bend. So tonight, once again, I am asking for Vice President Nizgatsky to please do the right thing and step down from your position.
Thank you.
I'm Brendan Crumlish, businessman with an office at Sugar Maple Court in South Bend. I'm here as the president of Businesses United IV. First, I too would like to thank Councilman Oliver Davis and Councilwoman Sherri Bolden Smith for speaking out against Sheila Nizgatsky and her unacceptable behavior earlier this year towards Logan Foster. Now, I have to reiterate the importance of allowing the public to speak freely during privilege of the floor without interjection from the chair or interruptions from the parliamentarian. It's imperative, given the recent history where public voices were unceremoniously dismissed, that we revisit the matter at hand concerning Nizgatsky's Plummin's 2024 contract with the city of South Bend. Contrary to claims made, evidence clearly shows that the husband of Vice President Sheila Nizgatsky, State Senator David Nizgatsky, his name, signature, and licensure were integrated within the documentation of the 2024 submission to the Board of Public Works for the Works Utility Line Repair Program. We're here again tonight to ask that Councilman Nizgatsky resign her position on this elected Board of City Representatives. The time has come to prioritize accountability and integrity over personal interest. Ms. Nizgatsky, uphold the values you were elected to represent and do the right thing and step down for the sake of the community. Now, the other members of your council must uphold the municipal codes. Together, you have the greatest responsibility to enforce the rules in our community. Please exercise them collectively by demanding Ms. Nizgatsky resign from her committee assignments and step down from the council once and for all. Do the right thing.
Thank you.
Yes, Logan Foster, 1138 College Street. Before I start my comments, I want to again thank Dr. Oliver Davis and now Councilwoman Sherri Bolden Simpson for their public statements against Sheila Nizgatsky's assault on May 13, 2024, in this very room. Tonight, I stand before you to discuss the compensation and performance of our parliamentarian, Mr. Bob Palmer. Mr. Palmer has received $91,338.24 in 2023. This amount, spread over 12 equal payments, equates to $7,611.52 per month. Unfortunately, I must address the concerning fact that taxpayers have been funding Mr. Palmer's continued inadequate service. Allow me to outline some specific examples of Mr. Palmer's poor performance. Firstly, Mr. Palmer has overstepped his role by attempting to cut off and cross-examine speakers during their allotted time, which is clearly outside the scope of his job and his contract. Moreover, when interrupting speakers, Mr. Palmer has also been factually incorrect, such when he falsely claimed David Nizgatsky lacked a contract with the city of South Bend in 2024. Alarmingly, Mr. Palmer also attempted to impose gag orders on residents who lodged complaints about council members. Furthermore, Mr. Palmer permitted the city council to convene in an executive session to discuss council member misconduct, despite a previous ruling from the public access counselor who issued an opinion against such uses of executive sessions. In this executive session, Mr. Palmer allowed the Rules Committee to conduct a vote contravening the open door law, which prohibits final actions such as voting during these sessions. In conclusion, it is evident that Mr. Palmer's services have not been worth the expense of $7,611.52 per month, or $91,338.24 per year. President McBride, as you consider the potential renewal of the parliamentarian's contract for next year, I urge you to reflect on these facts and reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Clerk Toronto?
I do not see anyone else wishing to speak under privilege of the floor.
With that being said, this meeting is now adjourned. Good night.